I'd like to call this August 22, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Captain.
Ms. Stoeck?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausel?
Here.
We're present.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our strategic priorities. Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. There are four strategic priorities to the plan: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leverage funding and facilities. Our strategic priorities give actionable focus to our district's purpose and mission and guide the work of our strategic plan. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Raiba for recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Hausel. First one is for OSBA student achievement. I know it's the start of the year, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Kilbane and Ms. Stoeck if to see if we're just getting going or if we've got anybody tonight.
No, we don't have anyone.
Yeah, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we don't.
I was gonna say, "Don't scare me like that." No, we'll start in September.
Sounds great. That's always a great addition to the meeting. And next, I will turn it over to Jenny, who's gonna go through our next recognition tonight.
Thank you, and I'm gonna go to the podium for this one. So, the state support team, Region 3, SST3 as it's called, in partnership with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, recognizes, celebrates, and honors educators, including administrators, who have provided exemplary instruction and creative programming that reduced or eliminated barriers in various situations and environments and furthered a sense of belonging for students with disabilities. So, I'm thrilled this year to announce that this year's award winner is Mrs. Katie Hawke. I'm gonna ask Katie to come up here and join me. So, Katie has been awarded the Outstanding Educator Achievement Award. Katie is an engaged principal who inspires confidence not only within our teachers but also with the students that they support. She praises effort and progress and is a constant presence in the lives of the students at Whitney Elementary. Whether it's challenging a student with a Takki challenge... How many Takkis did you have to eat?
It was an entire bag full.
An entire bag?
In my mouth at once.
Oh, geez. Helping students to regulate their behavior or being an advocate to purchase new playground equipment so that students with physical disabilities could have access. Katie is always willing to meet the needs of her students. She is the epitome of a dedicated compassionate educator who maintains a relentless focus on student success and well-being. Congratulations, Katie. It's a well-deserved honor.
Well, I just want to say, this is not just me. This is our entire community at Whitney Elementary. I feel so incredibly grateful to work at the school that I'm at. I have worked throughout almost all of our elementary schools in Strongsville, and Whitney is just such a special place. And the staff just work together on behalf of all of our students. It is 100% a team effort. It is not just me. So, this award is not just for me, but it's representative of everybody at Whitney Elementary and all the things that we do for our students. So, thank you so much. I appreciate this. Thank you.
The ceremony to celebrate this outstanding recognition was last spring, and so Katie's some staff members and her entire family were able to be there, but it's awesome to be able to recognize her here as a school district and with the board. So, with that, Ms. Hausel, that concludes our recognitions, and we are gonna go out of order a little bit, and I'm gonna turn it over to George, who's going to share a recommendation that we will have from his department.
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. So, as you're aware, our Assistant Treasurer, Nick Mancini, he had left August 1st to take a treasurer's position at playing local schools. So, we had a position open, and we have a recommendation for Yanni Tiliakos to fill the position. Yanni, you can come to the podium. We were sad to see Nick go, but we're excited to find someone with the caliber of Yanni. Yanni brings a wealth of government accounting experience. His last three years, he served as the Assistant Treasurer for North Ridgeville City Schools. Prior to that, he was five years in city government, four years as a city finance director, and one year as an assistant city finance director, and prior to that, six years with the Auditor of State's Office, and both in their audit and fraud investigatory unit division. So, excited to bring Yanni to the team and be an asset to the department and to the school district as well. So, Yanni starts Monday. Congratulations, Yanni. We're happy to have you.
Very excited to start as well. Just wanna say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm so thankful to be part of your wonderful school district. I wanna say thank you to the board, Superintendent, Treasurer, for giving this opportunity. Just really looking forward to working with everybody. Excited to get started on Monday. Thank you.
Thanks, Yanni.
Congratulations to Katie and welcome, Yanni. We look forward to what the school year brings for all of us. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. We welcome your comments. However, we do ask that you abide by the guidelines of our policy, board policy. When your name is called, please stand and state your name, address, and your topic. You'll have three minutes to speak. If your comment involves a problem with a student, employee, or board member, please do not address them by name. The primary role of the Board of Education is to listen and reflect on your comments. Sometimes, board members may respond or ask questions, but not always. Whether we respond or not, your input is valued. We do have eight public comment requests, so I am going to use my timer, just because we do have a full agenda to get through tonight. So, if you could abide by the three minutes, I would appreciate it. First up, we have Justin Tabasso. And I'm sorry if I mispronounce names. Please come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Justin Tabasso. I live 11530 Pine Tree Place in Strongsville, and I'd like to comment on the drug testing policy. So, I'd like to start off by, you know, saying I live in this city because of this school district, you know, but then I appreciate it, and there's so much good that comes from it. But to start off, I wanna look at all of you and just tell you, "How dare you? How dare you make a decision in the manner that you did where you are, you know, essentially taking my rights and acting as though this is your child and not my child?" With this, you know, what I think about, like in my life, everything that I think about is like kinda two steps ahead. So, there's like some issues that, you know, I would like to know, like the reasoning behind it and if they were considered. The first one is, the way this is being implemented and who it is targeting, I understand that it's really from looking up case law on this that it's the only way that you guys can get around the federal law with it. So, I guess I understand it from that point, but can you explain, like, the rationale behind taking my whole life's guidance with children, which says that children who are in extracurriculars, they perform better in life during these like times when they're younger and, you know, we have two parents that work all the time. These extracurriculars get them in something which like teaches them good habits and keeps them off the streets and from like doing bad things. So, we have all this going on, like, and as far as I know, this is common knowledge. And when you take this and target it at these kids and you're saying, "Hey, you need to sign away your parental rights and your kids' implied Fourth Amendment rights," or they're not gonna be able to do what is the thing that is accepted in common knowledge that is supposed to keep our kids off of drugs and safe and set them up in the future to be good people? And, you know, the second thing I really, that keeps coming to my mind is, I'd like to know, like, if you considered and what data is out there that shows, and I'm doing this like with American college alcohol abuse problems compared to European college alcohol abuse problems, where it's like our kids here go out and you binge drink and you join frats and kids drink themselves to death, and you compare that to like European where it's more of like an adult approach when it happens, when they're unsupervised? So, how, you know, is there data? Did you consider this where you're implementing this, and I would say it's like a temporary thing? You know, you only have a certain amount of time with this, and we're trying to set our kids up for adults. So, what is the data to show that this isn't like a temporary fix and that when our kids go off, you know, because they've been hunted down to see if, as was stated, that 93% of the problems with these schools are vaping and marijuana? So, we're hunting kids down to stop vaping and marijuana and, you know, doing this, which I can never get behind. Where's the data that says that when these kids go off to college and there's buffets of drugs, they're completely unsupervised, they don't have a parent who's in a house who can see if they're high or sleeping all day, that we don't create like the same kind of situation because we've been taking 11-year-olds and drug testing them to see essentially if they're smoking or using marijuana now? And then, my last comment on this is, and I could be wrong because I just skimmed through everything, if there isn't an opt-in for parents, why isn't there? Because, you know, when I'm talking about this with my friends and everything, it's like, yeah, I understand, you know, motivations behind this and everything, but so if I'm a parent and I'm seeing signs in my child that they're using drugs and suspect that, and I'm not just talking about marijuana, like, there's so many things out there, everything except marijuana and, you know, vaping and tobacco, like, which is what was talked about, all of those other things, like, people are dropping dead from it all over the place. And, you know, is there an opt-in for somebody who suspects that, like, "Hey, you know, school, you have this program. Can you help me, like, check out my kid on this?" So, those are my comments, and I appreciate the ability to speak and, you know, your consideration and all the other things that you do, which are wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy, and I am so sorry, I cannot...
Karen.
Karen, thank you.
Hi, Amy Caravino, 18267 Glen Creek Lane. I have a son in middle school. He's 13. He is an excellent athlete, excellent student. I have no suspicions that he is involved in any kind of drug activity. He puts his father and I to shame with how determined and disciplined he is on everything. I do not agree with this policy. I feel that the way that the policy was presented, we joined a focus group with the superintendent. We were allowed to speak, which we did, and it was 60-40 against. And then, when this was brought to the board, everything dropped off. So, we really never had an opportunity to come to speak before the board about our issues that we were having with how this policy was being rolled out. And I understand that there is issues with drugs with kids. We all were kids. I get it. But to make these young children, 11-years-old, go into a stall with an adult that they are not familiar with while they're peeing in a cup is absolutely sadistic to me. I'm sorry. I don't understand it. I don't think that we were told last night that if a pediatrician was to say that they were gonna do the testing, that would be invalid, and parents had asked if they could be notified in advance so they can come support their young child, and we were told no. These are our minor children, and I feel like the parents are being pushed out of the system. The administrators know best. The board knows best. You guys do not, and all of you are parents, I'm sure of it. Are your kids being randomly drug tested? Show of hands. Who's in a school district right now where their children are being randomly drug tested? And you're okay with that? Are you?
I am.
Are you?
I am.
Are you okay with that?
I am.
Well, I'm not, and my opinion wasn't taken into consideration. And I don't trust a board that is gonna go before this community and just kinda slide it under the rug and not tell anybody that they're gonna be meeting on it, discussion. All of that was just kinda put by the wayside, and I don't understand that. And I think that was done intentionally. So, I'm asking that you reconsider the policy and give us an opportunity as parents to put our heads together as a community, as the parents of these children that are now being put into this situation. And for me, I'm not giving consent. So, what does that mean, that I have to tell my son, who's already involved in fall sports? He's an awesome athlete. Sorry, I'm not gonna sign your civil rights way, son, for the school to just randomly pull you out of class and drug test you. You're putting that on the parents, and then it's gonna be all willy-nilly with the kids. "Oh, yeah, big, bad parents." That's such an unfair position to put us in. So, I'm asking that this policy be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Caravino.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Caravino. I reside at 17328 Falling Water Road. I'm also the proud parent of an overachieving 13-year-old. I think he has nearly a 4.0 average. He's one of the fastest runners on his cross-country team. His argumentation, debating skills are coming online in commensurate with early adolescents, and he's keeping us on our toes intellectually. Imagine that precarious trust that often happens in the very beginning of adolescence with kids and even on through the high school years. My son comes home from cross-country practice, and I greet him at the door, and I say, "I've got a cup for you, son, and I need you to urinate in it." And we've got a really good relationship. "Why, Dad?" "Well, I just wanna make sure that, you know, you're not messing around with drugs." He said, "Dad, I can't work any harder. You think I'm on drugs?" "No, I don't, but this is my policy. This is something that I think is best for you." And imagine the relationship. You can feel it probably in your stomach if you were to do that to your own kids. "Well, son, I gave you notice. It's a privilege to be in this house, and if you wanna continue to be here, if you want privileges to go out and attend extracurricular activities, you're going to submit to this whenever I tell you to." Imagine what that does irreparably to that relationship. Now imagine that his mother and father, who conceived this child and have been raising it and nurturing it, and we know how challenging it is in this era. This relationship now is suddenly being called into jeopardy by a policy that simply relies on a legal standard that says, "Oh, it's a privilege to be an extracurricular, and that's what we're gonna hang our hats on." And what I'm doing is I'm asking you to slow down and think about what else we might be able to do so that we can all achieve the same aims here. And consider a policy that says, "For those parents that wanna opt into this random screening, go ahead, but give them another option that says, 'No, but when your child's name is randomly called, we will talk to him, and if there's any observable reasonable suspicion or your teachers have anything that are reported, or the administrators have anything that they've reported, that we're gonna talk about it.'" And I'll bet you that those parents will say, "All right, son, we're gonna call you bluff. You know, eyes are bloodshot, your grades have dropped, you're slurring your words, you're weaving back and forth. Marijuana is now legal in the state of Ohio. Either come clean, or I may tell the school they can test you." And most of them are gonna come clean, and we still don't have to do that invasive thing. And even for me to do it in front of you is offensive, the whole thing. And that's how you're talking about a young lady in early adolescence at the onset of her cycles, having to go in there, whether it's in the stall with an adult on the other side of the door or otherwise. It is an invasive procedure, and I'm offering you something that's less invasive. And I'm asking you to appeal to your conservative values and understand the way in which you're potentially usurping the value of parents and the role that they play. And so, option one is that, yeah, we say, "Go ahead, randomly screen them." Option two is you call us. We come up there and we tag-team if there's a problem going on with our kids, and then we work with you for counseling and otherwise. And we don't have to ever get to this level where, for example, in the state of Ohio, we know marijuana is already legal. Ask yourselves rhetorically, how many administrators are gonna experiment with it on weekends, quietly? How many folks in the teachers' union are gonna experiment with it? We all know you're never gonna get a collective bargaining provision that allows for them to be randomly screened. The first thing they're gonna push back on is, "Oh, it's a 30-day burn-off rate on THC." And we know now that we're gonna be holding our students to a different standard on the legal fiction, which, by the way, it's a different United States Supreme Court since this idea that it's a privilege went into play, this legal fiction that, "We got you because you drove to school or you're engaged in extracurricular activities. You joined the math club. We got you." And I believe, Dr. Raiba, what you had mentioned was that the percentage is north of 50% of the students are gonna be dragged into this new policy. I'm asking you to consider a pause. Slow it down, and let's have meaningful dialogue. I was also a member of the focus group. I also voted against it. And what I'm asking is that you do an excellent job of communicating with us, sending us emails, text messages, the Remind app that we use, and a bunch of other different apps. What I'm respectfully asking the board to consider is either an app of your own or to empower, give Dr. Raiba permission to notify us of every parent in this district, of every meeting that you have, and give us a link to the agenda, the time of the date, just the way your principals write to us. The communication is excellent, but I would say that as a member that was on that focus group, I found that it was lacking. So, I say that, again, our son already trained. He's been running since the middle of August, training to be on cross-country. And the idea now that I have to tell him no is gonna triangulate us because my son, and this is chilling, but he's only 13. I didn't know this either. He said, "Dad, what's the big deal?" So, imagine that we're grooming an entire student body year after year with this policy that you're going to submit to this, even though there's less restrictive ways in which we can accomplish the same goal. We're gonna do this in a humiliating way where there's gonna be chatter in the school about, "Oh, did you get your number called?" There might even be this slow talk. Again, I'm appealing your conservative values where we have a public school telling people, "We don't need reasonable articulable suspicion. We don't need probable cause. The standards that your parents and school board members and administrators are allowed to enjoy in a constitutional form of government? Don't worry about that. This is random." "Why? Well, because it's a privilege to be in our program." Does that sound like a rationale, whether a court allows that or not, that rings true for us? Is there a way that we can do this, perhaps can set a standard for the other 160 school districts that have decided to go full throttle on this without actually thinking through what this means for students who possibly not even in their service class have addressed their membership in a constitutional republic? We enjoy probable cause. We can't get pulled over unless there's reasonable articulable suspicion. Your school union is not gonna agree to this. The administrators aren't gonna agree to it. And I guarantee you, there's a substantial or significant percentage of folks that are gonna be experimenting from your own administrations and from your own peer groups with this new legalized marijuana law, but they don't get touched. I'm asking you to keep us involved and allow us to ask you again, please slow this down so that we have an opportunity to have a sit-down where we can possibly fashion something that gets at the same final result. I would be someone that would say, "If my son is acting up, we're going up to the school. We're gonna get tested, but let me make that decision. I'm making all these other critical choices, and the consequences are gonna land on me." And it raises the hair on my arm when I hear my son tell me, "What's the big deal?" He doesn't understand what's at play here, that we're drawing bodily fluids as a precondition to participate in sports, and if he didn't join for extracurricular, he gets to fly under the radar. And I'm asking, why don't parents get that same level of consideration? And I know the legal answer because it's mandatory that we provide an education, but the privilege alone, it's a privilege to be a father. So, I wanna have that same standard as the kids that don't have to opt in because they're not in extracurricular activities. And again, we can partner, but I want it to be a partnership. I want us to value the rights that parents have. I'm sure we all know about the significant movement countrywide when it comes to parents' rights. Slow this down. I think we can get at this at the same way without us having to have this negative relationship with a lot of parents that know you're doing a good job, but it comes to this, it's like, "Are you kidding me? The Strongsville School District is doing this." It's not enough that the others are doing it. We don't have to follow. Let's show them the better way. Let's show them the less restrictive way. I appreciate your time.
Michael, thank you. Thank you so much for your thoughts. Next, we have Jennifer Mahoney.
I'm Jennifer Mahoney. I live at 17190 Golden Star Drive. I'm going to talk about your drugs testing policy and the levy. Greetings, Dr. Raiba, and the Strongsville City School District Board of Education and fellow parents, and I just wanna say I appreciate everybody's input into caring for our students in this district. I think this is a very excellent and caring district. As a parent, I sign for my children to say who can accompany them to the pediatrician's office or if they can drive themselves. At ages 10 and 12, they're not yet ready to drive themselves. Also, as a parent, I can sign for my child to opt out of the health class in the middle school. However, my daughter is now subject to random drug testing according to this new policy. I'm a certified registered nurse practitioner. I have been for the last 20 years, and never once has anybody had to listen to me urinate during a drug screen. My last drug screen was last week, not at Quest Diagnostics, not at the Cleveland Clinic, where I worked at the Heart Center for 14 years, did anybody listen to me have to urinate? We're in a private bathroom with a full door. I don't know if there can be an amendment to this policy. I think in medicine, we do no harm. This is a medical test. This isn't academic. This is more my field than your field, not to be putting you down or anything. I appreciate all the work you've put into this. But we wanna do no harm, and I think if you shift your lens and look at it from the perspective of a 12-year-old female, you're gonna have a different thought. It's anxiety-producing at best and probably traumatizing. I don't know if they're not using the blue dye with your vendor. I don't know if they're giving you a discount for not using the blue dye. I don't understand how some of these policies played out. Speaking of the discount, I'm gonna transition to the school levy. What's the most expensive vehicle to drive these days? The shopping cart. All of us have had our expenses go through the roof, and we just had our real estate appraisals go through the roof with major tax increases coming. I know you guys, we did not pass the last levy. You decreased it. You wanted to get 9.8 million out of it, and you decreased it to 9.2, but we also have this tax increase on our real estate, so I feel a little bit duped by the reduction because to me, it doesn't seem like a reduction. Dr. Raiba, you said you'd work with us on this, and in the words of the good Dr. Ross Green, I wanna say, "What's up?" That's it. Thank you.
Next, we have Maggie Coza.
My name is Maggie Coza, and I reside at 9812 Hazelwood Avenue. I wanna first, I start saying that when you guys were talking about the drug testing policy, honestly, I was of the sound in mind of, "What's the big deal? I wanna know if something's up with my child." And when I started having conversations with people, they said, "Maggie, you have an 11-year-old daughter." And I went, "Yeah." And one of the things that I'm gonna touch upon, and I'm sorry, and I'm gonna keep this as scientific as I possibly can, and I touched a little bit upon it last night. and I'm going to keep this as scientific as I possibly can, and I touched a little bit upon it last night. My daughter is 11, which means it puts her in the window for certain things to happen to her body. I just imagine the anxiety of her having to urinate in a cup with somebody listening to her and God forbid she be in the middle of a cycle and having to deal with that mess. I'm sorry that's graphic, but we need to be real about this. We need to talk about this stuff. It's okay to talk about this stuff. It's, it's natural for them. She is 11 and can't comprehend why you're doing this. I had a discussion with her. I did my due diligence and I talked to my kids. I said, you tell me, if somebody walked up to you in school, would you do this? Jack said to me, not a big deal, I'd do it. And Ruby said, absolutely not. I am not peeing in a cup for somebody I don't know. And I said, well, there you go. And I have to respect that with my daughter. You know, when you look at section three, under G, number nine, and you read the words in that exact statement, you have to understand what that sounds like to us. That is like riding along the line of grooming talk. And I'm sorry, you guys just had a football coach get let go for doing some things. So a lot of us are on high alert with some of the adults that you have working for you. And it's really hard to navigate this world and trust people with my children, especially when we know that these things happen. They happen and we can't be naive to that. Just like I can't be naive that my kids say, well, Mom, I would never do drugs. Do I believe them? Yes. Does that mean I let my guard down and I don't monitor their phones and check to make sure they're not writing it down, telling their friends, hey, I, you know, got my mom's liquor cabinet or whatever? Like, I check their stuff because that's what I do. They're minors. And you're right, certain things are not private. I am their parent. I have the right to know certain things. But I have a problem with somebody else being there. I was the one that asked the question, if a parent can come up and be there to support my child, if you're going to ask her to do this. And to be told no is a slap in the face to my parental rights. You guys didn't want to respect the mask rule? And then, I'm sorry to touch upon this, and before I get into it, I just want people to know, yes, I'm a registered Democrat, but I respect my, I respect the Second Amendment. We don't do anything about taking certain guns, certain guns, not all, or having sensible gun laws, but you want to put my kids through traumatizing shooter drills? Like, just think about the perspective of how we're traumatizing our kids because the adults can't seem to figure it out and get it together. I have to touch upon that. And the second thing, last night I mentioned that there were meeting changes over the summer. I don't want to get into this. I couldn't keep up with things. I had life-saving surgery over the summer. I almost died. So I wasn't keeping up with anything that wasn't talking about the levy. That's what I'm passionate about. That's what I wish we could be talking about, that I overlooked this because I said, whatever, it's a drug po- it's a drug testing policy. It should be fine. And I didn't pay attention to this until the last two weeks. And that's why I'm speaking about it. Like, right there, your collection process has red flags all over it. And I, I am with them, asking you guys to please put a pause on this and reconsider another focus group, more channels to talk about it, giving yourself time to talk to other experts on this, particularly with the middle school. I get when you get older, these things are common with jobs and stuff like that and you want to prepare them for real life with some of these things. But not all jobs drug test. Sharon Williams doesn't drug test. My husband works at Sharon Williams. Unless you're a driver, you don't get drug tested. So I'm just asking you, like everyone else, please put this on pause and please listen to us when we express to you, this has got red flags written all over it. Thank you.
Next, we have Shannon Burns.
Good evening, school board. And this is Shannon Burns, 18079 Brick Mill Run, Strongsville. Standing here today to talk about the school levy and ask for the board to reconsider the vote that was taken last meeting. Over the last year, this discussion about the school levy has been going on. It's changed slightly since we've been talking. Originally, this conversation was about, um, the schools had a significant amount of funds in the bank. The voters decided that a renewal wasn't the right time. They should reduce the size of the levy. The school board went back in March with the same question to the voters. A lot more resources went into the conversation about it and the voters still came back and said, we should reduce the amount of revenue into the district. But now, we're faced with a totally different question. And what's really disappointing, I think, is that we sat here at the last meeting and had this conversation. And I said, and I asked the board to consider not adding, not approving the levy to put on the ballot that was being asked for. And let me just tell you why, at the time, I thought that this was the right choice. Because we had just learned that the schools would be receiving $2.4 million more from our tax revenue. So we weren't starting from the same place we were in March. We were up two, almost two and a half million dollars. Well, at the time, I had said, you know, when we sat here at the mic, I said, well, you guys didn't know about it when you put this solution up. You know now, so let's reconfigure and let's change this. Well, what's really disappointing, and we heard about it during the meeting and since then have verified that this was the case, is that the board knew, when this plan was hatched, they knew that we were getting almost $2.5 million more already. So then they decided not to do a renewal again, but instead to do a new levy. And that new levy would put on top of the $2.5 million that's new money coming in, an additional what's, what was billed to us as a reduction, 9.8 million down to 9.2. Well, what we now find out is that this is actually a tax increase. We said at the last meeting that this is a tax increase. You vote for this. You're voting for a new tax. And on top of it, you're asking us to do it permanently and never have the chance to vote on this again. This is a flawed policy. We are in an environment right now where voters, first off, somebody earlier said something about the grocery drive, they're really hurting right now with the amount that it's costing us, the cost of living increased with inflation. Now, we are being asked to eliminate our voice for future tax, uh, tax decisions on this levy. Clearly not the right choice, clearly a flawed policy that will not pass in November. We all know it won't pass in November. It hasn't passed two times before. And now we've asked for more money and a permanent levy. It will not pass again in November. You know this. And now, media reports are saying that it's going to cost the school system tax dollars, $30,000 to $40,000 in tax dollars to put this on the ballot again, which means you're going to waste our money and it's going to fail again. Furthermore, board members have told me directly, and it was said during this meeting last time, that this would be done in an effort to enact $10 million in cuts. Those cuts clearly are a political decision to make it more difficult on parents, more difficult on children, so that voters will pass it the next time. That's not a policy that's in the best interest of our district. It's not a policy that are in the best interest of our children. I'm asking you today, you have the opportunity to do this, let's regroup, withdraw this levy, this levy that will not pass in November, this permanent tax increase that you've put on the ballot in November. Withdraw it and come back to the voters with a reasonable solution. Listen to what the voters have to say. Well, a lot of heard people talk tonight on, on the drug policy. And I think what I, there was one theme that I heard from everyone, and that was, give us an opportunity to have a real conversation. Well, the difference in this topic is that we've had that real conversation. We went on the ballot in November, it failed. We went on the ballot in March, it failed. Your solution for the third time is to increase the taxes and make it permanent and take it away from the voters ever again in the future. Flawed policy. Please withdraw this. You have the power to do it. Resolution tonight would give the ability for the treasurer to withdraw this from the ballot. I ask you to do that. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Maloney.
Good evening. Scott Maloney, 19532 Stoughton Drive in Strongsville. My wife, Vicki, and I are 20-year residents of Strongsville. Our two sons are both currently in college after graduating from the Strongsville schools. I'm a former Strongsville school board member, city council member, and continue to be involved with numerous civic groups in our community. In the fall of 2023, we suddenly saw organized opposition to a school levy renewal that was on the November 2023 ballot. First, I want this audience and those watching on TV to understand that the mastermind behind this supposedly angry and frustrated group of people is Strongsville resident Shannon Burns. Mr. Burns owns companies that provide political campaign services to clients. Any nasty or negative campaign pieces or emails or text messages you have received over the past 10 years for Strongsville ballot issues have been orchestrated by Mr. Burns. In my opinion, he does not do this because he truly cares about our community. He does it so he has material for his portfolio to share with prospective clients to show how he can run what he considers an effective campaign. Never mind that his mail pieces and other material have been filled with distorted facts to manipulate his audience. Let's turn our attention to the importance of getting this levy passed for our top-performing school system. The continuing levy that will be on the ballot for the third time this November was previously a renewal levy last approved by voters in May of 2019. This was the first time new operating money had been approved by the voters since November of 2007. Residents may not know that our district currently has two renewal levies on its books that they have to juggle. We're the only school district in Cuyahoga County that has more than one of these to manage. The levy on the ballot this November has reduced millage and will swap a renewal levy for a continuing levy so that our district can reduce their funding complexity by only having to periodically pursue a single renewal levy in the future as funds run out. So why do funds run out? In 1976, the Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 920 with the intended purpose of preventing inflation from causing our property values to increase, property taxes to increase. In numerous court cases, this method of funding has been declared unconstitutional, but our courts have not held our Ohio Legislature accountable to fix it. If a school district passes an operating levy at a certain millage, when property tax reappraisals are completed by the county and your property value increases, none of those additional tax dollars tied to that reappraisal will go to the schools. The school operating levy millage is revised downward to keep those tax dollars neutral. There is a small amount of inside millage not subject to House Bill 920 that does potentially generate additional tax revenue for the schools when the county does property value adjustments every three years, but it is never enough to offset the annual operating cost increases for the school district. So think about your own budgets. Due to the recent inflation, the cost of everything has gone up. Housing, food, gas, utilities. In many cases, people have been able to demand higher raises because the cost of living has shot up. Our school district is subject to the same inflationary pressure on those operating costs. Additionally, homes throughout our community in recent years have been turning over to families with kids, so our enrollment numbers are climbing again. We're now starting to see mobile classrooms going up at some of our schools. The district was prepared to address this with a capital improvement plan that was to be partly funded by their reserves. However, they have now been forced to put that on hold due to two failures of their renewal levy in November of '23 and in March of this year. This district has not engaged in wasteful spending. In fact, the opposite is true. The school district has received the meritorious budget award and a certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International for seven straight years. The school district has received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for seven straight years. The district has an AA1 rating from Moody's. The auditor of the state has given the district an award with distinction for its financial audit for four straight years. Of the 31 school districts in Cuyahoga County, Strongsville ranks 25th in residential effective tax rate. Strongsville is in the bottom quarter of taxes paid for residential properties. A Strongsville homeowner pays less school taxes than 77% of other school districts in Cuyahoga County with the same home valuation. So let's look at this in terms of return on your investment. By any measure, the district is now one of the top-performing districts in the state. Strongsville City Schools are one of only 75 districts in the state of Ohio to receive a five-star rating. For the student growth measure, which is a way to measure how students mature in their academics as they go K through 12, Strongsville City Schools ranked 25th in Ohio, placing them in the top 4%. For this measure at the high school, we rank fifth, putting us in the top 1%. Our high school athletics recently received an exemplary level status, only the second Ohio school district to receive this award since its inception in 2009. The district's music program has repeatedly earned the distinction of being one of the top 100 music programs in the nation for years. A significant percentage of our high school students are blessed with the opportunity to take honors and advanced placement classes that give them a leg up as they start their college education. Two months after our older son started his freshman year of college, he told us, I had no idea how great the Strongsville schools were until I saw how well I was prepared for college, while most of the students that are attending with me seem overwhelmed and are really struggling. Beyond the value of giving a quality education to our children to prepare them for adulthood, top-notch schools are a critical success factor for a strong community. As the Strongsville, as a Strongsville Chamber of Commerce trustee, I frequently talk to Strongsville business owners. Many business leaders who move to their businesses to Strongsville will tell you, our quality schools were an important consideration because their employees want to live and raise a family near where they work. Our robust business parks have steadily grown corporate tax revenues for the city, contributing to lower personal income and property taxes for residents. Another benefit is that homes are more desirable and command higher selling prices in communities with top-performing school districts. Please don't let armchair quarterbacks who emerge for every levy fool you into believing their distorted narrative that the schools are flush with cash and don't need the money. The state of Ohio has an $8 billion rainy day fund and yet this organized opposition group is not up in arms about that. Failure to pass this continuing levy puts this district back into a position of having to chase levies every few years or cut aspects of the program to the bone, causing significant damage to the long-term stability and quality of education that our children receive. I know from experience as a board member, it can take up to a decade for a school district program to recover from cuts that have to be made when levies are not passed. Most households no longer have children attending our schools, but I encourage everyone to pay it forward, as generations have done before us, by continuing to fund a top-quality school system where graduates will be running our government and our businesses in the not-too-distant future. This is an important and worthwhile investment, which by the way, does not take any additional money out of your pocket. It is simply continuing existing funding into the future, in fact, at a slightly lower level, which based on how our district has performed, should be a slam dunk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last, we have Sean Beluski. Beluski, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Beluski. I live at 21645 Country Way. And I'll keep it short and sweet, especially following Mr. Maloney's comments. I echo everything that, that he said in his comments. And it's just, I guess by coincidence that I'm here tonight when Mrs. Hawke was being honored. My son Charlie is in first grade. He was a half-day kindergartner last year at Whitney. Even though we're in the Surhrar district, we, we went to Whitney. And, you know, he, he couldn't have been more embraced by the, the Whitney community, especially Mrs. Hawke. And, you know, maybe she'll watch this later, but I apologize, Mrs. Hawke, that Charlie dunked you in the dunk tank. But, you know, even as a half-day kindergartner, he felt the love of this community. And that's why four years ago, we moved, we moved back here to Strongsville. I was, grew up in Strongsville until the second grade before my family moved to Independence. And as my wife and I, we have three sons. Our, you know, middle guy will be in kindergarten next year. I've got a three-month-old as well, so we're going to be in this district quite a long time. And it's important that, you know, my wife's a former third-grade teacher. You know, we went to public schools. We went to state colleges here. You know, it's important to have strong, robust school systems. We look around at the other communities nearby us and see the impacts of waiting till it's too late. And just to hear Mr. Maloney talk about, you know, kind of that AP experience, I was, you know, in Independence, a great school district as well. But we had levies that failed my senior year and we cut- But we had levies that failed my senior year, and we cut AP classes, classes that we were very, you know, looking forward to being a part of. And so that, you know, was a big impact as we weighed the future of our own kids, especially valuing education, and then the bigger impact it has on the community itself. We moved here because of the schools. I will not say that, you know, shortly enough. It was because of the strong schools and the strong community that we have that we're here in Strongsville. And so we couldn't be more supportive of it. And I know Mrs. Hawke had to leave, but she embodies that quality in the experience that we've just had in two short years and a couple days. My son was excited to buy lunch for the first time, you know, so simple things. But the school has embraced us and embraces so many others. And we look forward to all the parents who will be out in November to vote for this levy and to keep that high-quality education going. So thank you all.
Thank you, Sean. So that concludes public comment. We appreciate everyone coming out tonight and sharing their thoughts and opinions. We are going to move on with our agenda now. Like I said before, we do have a full agenda. It's a great opportunity if anyone wants to leave or if you'd like to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome. But we are going to go ahead and move on. So next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the August 1st, 2024 work session. All district video and audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes. And then next, sorry, let my computer catch up here. Okay, so next we are going to have a discussion on our levy implications. I would like to start out. So we are moving forward with our levy, as it is stated, on the November ballot. The discussion I would like to have tonight, because I'm a positive person, is how we are going to continue to move our district forward once we pass this levy. We have worked really hard. I know, you know, Cameron has been at this for over 10 years. Michelle and I have been on the board for five. Haley and Sharon for almost two now. George and Jenny, you guys have been along for a long time. And I feel like we've done some great things in our district. It's linked to your agenda, just some of, you know, highlighting what we have done. We have added back $4.2 million we've added to our district, enhancements for our students. And I know that we can continue with the support of our community adding more. Just to highlight a couple of those, you know, we've done a career exploration program for our high school students. We've added extracurriculars at our elementary level. We've added back sports that we've had to cut in the past. My children were part of this district. I can tell you right now, my kids are 24, 22, and 20. They were part of this district in 2008, 2009, when we were taking out loans to make payroll. I don't want to see it come back to that. You know, my kids didn't get to go on field trips. I know that's not the basics of education, but those are enhancements that our kids deserve to have. So tonight, I would, I would like to just talk about how we can add to this list of things that we have done. And I'd like my fellow board members to talk, you know, to share what they feel like. How can we move forward and continue to make this the premier district that we are for Sean's three-month-old baby coming up here before he knows it? He'll be in kindergarten. I know, you know, we can do this. So if we could switch to the other...
I think this is important for people to realize, and this is all attached to, anybody out there can see this, which we had talked about this before the...
It's attached to the agenda?
It's attached to the agenda. You can see it. Yes, yes. Well, maybe not from there, but, I mean, yeah, you'll be able to. And we had discussed this before the first, I think, before the first levy that we were really looking into. And I felt it only fair that we eliminate, as so did our board members, not just me, that we eliminate some of the athletic fees. If you take a look, pay to participate and trainers' fees come to about $255,000. You know, I think we all agree we would be willing to reinvest that. So people know that we are, you know, there's a give and take. We want them to feel comfortable with the levy, and we also want them to know that we would be able to do this. We cannot do this if the levy doesn't pass. There's no way. But we talked about this, and it was discussed before the first levy. So we're not just doing this now because we're desperate. We're doing it because we want to. We want the community to feel comfortable and know that there's been a lot of false and very hurtful propaganda, you know. And I'm hoping that the community hasn't lost trust in us, but I fear that they have. I think we've tried our best to always be upfront. I know that I have, and I respect everybody at this table. No one has hid anything from anyone, ever. And all you have to do is go back, because we tape every school board meeting. So there is nothing that isn't in plain sight. Now, maybe if you didn't understand it, you could have asked. But to out and out keep fighting this propaganda is getting old. We're not hiding anything. We don't want to hide it. There's nothing to hide. And, you know, these are the things that we are willing, like, in an effort to make the community feel like we are working with them. You know, I know they talked about free, full-day kindergarten. And that was something that we threw around. And I know I really wanted it, because I know it's a burden on people. We're willing to do that. We're willing to take away, and when I saw all of this, too, there's a lot of fees that parents are paying. So if we can help them in that area, I think we all agree, we would love to do that. I mean, when you just break it all down, and I encourage everyone out there listening or whatever, please go on this, because it will tell you how much everybody is paying. And so, you know, from my perspective, you know, I just feel like it's like we are trying to work with the community. We are trying to work together so they can see that we're sincere.
I have to agree with Sharon. Like she said, like, this is things I've had on my radar for the five years I've been on the board, is the pay-to-participate. You know, I know when my three children were all in sports and multiple sports, and between that and workbook fees, I mean, I have to take a small loan. So we are in a financial position where we can help our families. And I'm glad that we're to the point now where, you know, we can start doing this.
Yeah, I was just really hoping Bonnie was going to be here today. Because Bonnie has been a very involved community member, and she has come for years and shared her desire and confusion about why we don't offer free, full-day kindergarten. And I wish she were here today to see this full conversation about, this has been on our radar for a long time. Financial stability moving forward without consistent renewals makes that a real option for us for the first time. And I wouldn't like Sean, except I'm about 10 years ahead in that we moved here when my oldest son was six. We moved here specifically for the options that he will have in high school. Monday, he started high school. So, but at that time, I was eight months pregnant with our baby. And I thought, my first son won't get free, full-day kindergarten. Then my second son won't get full, free-day kindergarten. My third son won't get free, full-day kindergarten. But that little one, he is in third grade. That day came and went for me, but it did not come and go for Sean's kids, not all of them. And I would love to be able to do this. I think it is right. I think it is well overdue. But these are the things, like, I'm looking at our list of what we invested in our students, and there's a good portion of things on here that we had to reinstate. And it took us, what, five, five-plus years to reinstate? As Scott shared with us, it takes 10 years to recover. We're just outside that 10 years. And if we go back and start that cycle all over again... So rather than dwelling on that conversation, and we're going to have to have it, of what happens if this fails, we're choosing today to look forward and say, here are things that have been on our minds and hearts for quite some time, for me, over 10 years, of getting our district in the position where we can be the best district we can be. And we can't do that without this levy. And I'm recalling, to Sharon's point, this time last year, I had a very humorous conversation with Richard, who couldn't be here tonight, about pencils. And the following day, a case full of pencils showed up on my front door. Because he has a good sense of humor, and my kids got a kick out of it, but we still use those pencils for their school supplies. But part of that conversation was, I wish we could give kids free pencils. And I don't think it's actually about the pencils. It's about what things are absolutely necessary to the functioning of a student in a school building that we still have the parents paying for. And the list of things up here today are amongst those things. And we may never get to the point where we're providing pencils, but we can get closer to meeting all the needs of our students in the school building. But again, that comes with the funds to do it. So I'm hopeful. I'm looking forward. I'm hoping, I'm not in the position Sean was in, where my kids are in high school and we're removing AP classes. And we need the community's help with that. But I know that I am, those of you who are here tonight, that want to be heard. I'm a good listener. And if you have other ideas of things that you would like to see the district be able to add, please share those with us. And of course, you can bring any other concerns as well.
Thank you.
And I think it's important, like, the other sheet that was up. Can we go back to the first one? Because there was a lot of, like, misinformation about that. I hate the word misinformation anymore. It's become political. But there's been a lot of misinformation. We added all of these things as I've been here. We reinvested, yes, we did, money into our school. I was highly offended to see someone say, accuse us of that, especially me. I have, like, nine grandchildren in the district. Why would I not reinvest anything into our district? That's insane. That's just stupid talk. So I think I want people to really take a look at that. A lot of stuff was cut during COVID, I think, and then I came in. And that was our top priority. Like, I wanted these kids to get back to, like, especially at the middle school. I felt like they just had a lot of stuff cut, and we wanted to get it back, and we did. We got mostly everything like that I think we were trying to. There's always more you can do, but to say that we weren't, you know, just take a look, please, at the list. Because I don't think that, in your everyday life, I wouldn't do that either, you know? The schools are the schools. But just please, I'm asking you, to look at it and realize that this is what we've done in the last few years. And we weren't wasting money. We were investing in the kids. So.
Haley, do you want to add?
Well, when you look at the list of fees for the school, whether it be through band and orchestra or science books, that's not on top of, kind of going back to what Michelle said with pencils, that's not on top of the schoolless fees of what you have to get, whether it be Kleenex or Clorox wipes. And that all adds up, especially with the all-day kindergarten that should be... I can be completely honest, I have no idea, having been in kindergarten, if what my parents paid, if they paid what they did, where I was. I just know that I had full-day kindergarten. And I don't know what they sacrificed to make that happen, but it seems like it should be a right for everybody to have it, not a privilege to have full-day kindergarten. And that's been one of the biggest complaints that I have seen from parents, that it costs a lot, especially if they have multiple young children, and sacrifices that they have to make for their kids to get an education or be able to be granted that education at that age instead of waiting until they get older. And also, obviously, the talks that we've had today and what we've listened to parents talk about with the drug testing, the importance of sports and the pay-to-play, having brought in the intramural sports that we have at the middle school and the high school. So it's not just about the, you know, the football team or the basketball team or cheerleading. It's about those intramural sports, too, to appeal to all different kids based on their ability level, based on their commitment level, based on what they can do. Some kids have jobs, so those intramural sports might be working better for the children that aren't able to necessarily have games on Friday nights or Saturday mornings. And I think that it is developing and allowing the kids the opportunity to be well-rounded and find what they're good at and to be able to have the free pay-to-play kind of stuff, you know, being gone in terms of paying for that. You might find children that didn't realize what they're good at, you know? Otherwise, they would not have been able to afford to do it, so they just never even had the option. But if having the option to do it for free and try it out, they might find something that's either an outlet for them emotionally or therapeutically. But all in all, from hearing what people said today about the importance of those kinds of extracurricular activities, I think this goes hand in hand with that.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement of what we have listed here. Again, with the support of the community, just to continue to move our district forward, this is what we would like to tackle next, are these three items. And I just want to add, for the free, full-day kindergarten, we do have space limitations with our buildings. So there would have to be a cap with a lottery, but it's still moving us, you know, closer to that end game, to that goal of having every student in free, full-day kindergarten. So it looks like, you know, we could add another 1.4 back, investing back into our students with the support of our community. So I think our next steps would be to come back with a resolution at our next meeting, and we would vote and we would, you know, commit to that this is what we will work on for the next school year.
I would like to say that if and when this passes, I think it'd be great for us to take a look also at the adaptive programs that we have. The special education in Strongsville is absolutely amazing, from the elementary levels all the way to the high school. And I was blown away, having taken a tour and seeing some of the classroom settings that they have of learning to fold laundry and learning to do this, or taking coffee to different teachers and learning to interact. Mr. Wengler has talked about the adaptive sports program that we have that is absolutely amazing. To see it in person, there aren't words to describe how amazing it is to watch the peers with the adaptive students and everyone get into it, and the camaraderie, and the happiness, and the excitement. And that right there is something you can't learn in school, in the classroom. But to be able to give them the opportunity to interact when they otherwise wouldn't be able to in a scenario like that, I think, is absolutely priceless. And I think that if we had the ability to integrate more money into that, I think the only things would go up from there.
All right, so I think everyone is in agreement that we'd like to move forward with this. So we will vote at our next meeting to make this commitment. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay, so back to our agenda. I am going to turn it over to Mr. Aganastu.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausel. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first one being the treasurer's report. With the first item is the financial report for the month ending June 30th, 2024. We'll go over the supplemental report in the same format that we go every month. For this one, though, however, it's the fiscal, June 30th represents the fiscal year end for fiscal year 2024, the school year that just had passed as our books close on June 30th. So kind of give a highlight for the whole fiscal year. First, the revenues were $269,000, favorable in comparison to forecasts. That's about 0.3% better. Current year expenditures were about $847,000 under the forecast, which is about 0.98%. That would ultimately contribute to a $1.1 million increase to the cash balance savings for those two factors. We'll touch on that a little bit more at the end about our cash position at the end of the fiscal year. First, looking at revenues. Overall, total revenues in June was up by $114,000. The biggest change was receiving state reimbursements of $78,000 for catastrophic costs. We typically receive that in May, which we did. The state had additional funds to distribute, so they reallocated those funds. And we got one-time money in June of $78,000. And then also, we had a refund of prior year expenses of $54,000, which was due to, our ester funds are expiring at the end of, at the end of next month. at the end of, at the end of next month. So we had, we had some savings in ESTR funds due to some vacancies. So we were able to use part of those to charge off eligible expenses from previous fiscal years and then also the current fiscal year. So the ones for the previous fiscal years were receipted as refund of prior receipts. And for the ones for the current fiscal year, they were just reduction of expenditure that I'll talk about in the expenditure section. Overall, on revenues, revenues totaled 90 point, 90 million, 90.5 million for fiscal year 24, which is about 2.3 million higher, 2%, 2.6% higher than fiscal year 23. The main differences are as follows. Property taxes totaled 72.5 million, which is 561,000, or 0.78% higher than the previous year. The increase is either due to an increase in collection rate or collections split between the spring and fall 2024, which overlapped two calendar years. As the increase has made up a higher collection for the spring in comparison to last spring, where the fall, the fall collections were about the same. I won't know whether this is a collection rate issue or more of a collection split until the final 24, 2024 collections are completed and those reports are out. State revenues totaled 9.5 million, which is also $500,000 higher than the previous year. The increase is a combination due to increase from the biennial budget. And then also, we received one-time reimbursement from the state of $243,000 for the new textbook requirements. And then interest income, interest income total 2.7 million, which is about 800,000 higher than the previous fiscal year. Revenues in comparison to the forecast, revenues were 269,000 or 0.3% higher than the forecasted amount. The primary differences were as follows. Interest income was about 120,000 more than forecasted. Payment in lieu of taxes was 92,000, which was a settlement that we negotiated after the forecast, and then the refund of prior year expenditure of the 54,000. Moving on to expenditures. Overall, total expenditures for June were up 3.3, about 2.1 million. The largest change was in our other expenses of textbooks of 1.4 million. We had a new textbook adoption. It was a combination of two years' worth of adoptions and one. Last year, we did not do a textbook adoption. We carried that dollars forward into this year, and we did this year's and last year's textbook adoption. And in the current year, getting ready for this year, which those invoices were paid in June. Also, we had a higher transfer out, which was made up of the athletic investment that we did to the athletic department of 150,000, and then also 568,000 to our termination benefits fund. And then equipment was higher than last June as well. A single month's results can be skewed compared to a prior year because of the timing of when expenses occurred. The fiscal year-to-date results when, when involving additional month of expenses can provide more insight. Looking at overall fiscal year-to-date expenditures, expenditures totaled 85.3 million for fiscal year 24, which is 5.7 or 7.18% higher than fiscal year 23, when not including the $25 million transfer from fiscal year 23. Additionally, expenditures are up 10.7 million or 14.37 higher in comparison to fiscal year 22, which is about an annual increase of 7% per year. The main differences between fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 23 are as follows. Salary and benefits totaled 7.5 million, which is about 4.1 million or 6.17% higher than the previous year. The increase is due to a combination of additional positions, increased salaries due to negotiated agreements, and increased healthcare costs of 15%. Salary and benefits make up about 87, 82.7% of the total general fund expenditures. Purchased services totaled about 7.3 million, which is 340,000 or 4.86% higher than the previous year. The primary increases were due to utilities of 210,000 and special education placements of 107,000. All other expenditures totaled 7.5 million, which is about 1.2 or 20.63 higher than previous year. And the primary increases were due to the textbook adoption. Expenditures in comparison to the forecast, expenditures were 847,000 or 0.98% lower than the forecasted amount. And the primary differences were salary and benefits. They were 309,000 less than the forecast. This was due to savings in the ESTR funds where we were able to charge off 146,000 of current year subcosts to ESTR funds. Purchased services were 154,000 less than forecast, which is primarily due to timing of expenses and open purchase orders carried into fiscal year 25. And other expenses were 383,000 less than forecasted, which was due to budget savings. 243,000 in materials and supplies and 148,000 in year-end transfers and advances. And then moving on to the cash balance. We started the year beginning cash balance of 46.8 million. Total revenues were 90.6 million. Total expenditures were 85.3 million. Revenue over expenditures were 5.2 million for an ending cash balance of 51.3. Incumbrances totaled 1.8 million, leaving an unencumbered balance of 49.5 million at the close of fiscal year 2024, moving into 2025. Any questions on the June financials? Thanks. Then moving on to item two, which is the financial report for the month ending July 31st. Since we're in a temporary budget for July and August, we won't adopt the annual budget until September once, I'll say, staffing is finalized, which it now is, and our first payroll with the new staffings tomorrow. So I'll be able to get some hard numbers for salaries and benefits and incorporate that into the annual budget. And also, all our contracts are in place, so we'll be able to start working on the annual budget and building the, the fall forecast as well. So don't have the supplemental report for July or, or August when the time comes, but the monthly status report is there for July for your consideration. Item F3, the SCF grant approval. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following grant from the Strongsville Education Foundation be approved for fiscal year 25. It's a second-grade Taekwondo district-wide grant of $585 to implement a Taekwondo program during the PE classes. And this is to pay for the wood that they would break at the ceremony of those classes. District credit card limits, F4. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that, per board policy 6423, the annual credit card limit, so per cardholder and/or account be provided as listed in the exhibit. This, if you recall, back in the spring, we needed to increase the limits and also add an additional credit card for a DEC advisor as they were traveling to Anaheim for their national trip. We needed to issue one more credit card as each advisor needed their own to rent a car to transport the students. So we needed, at the time, increase for one. Now that the trip is over and the invoices have all been cleared out, this is to put the limits back to our usual limits. Item 5, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the amended temporary appropriations for fiscal year 25 be approved per the attached exhibit. The changes there is for the SCF grant. And then the last three items need a separate vote. They're not part of the consent agenda. The next one, F6, the annual investment report. This is an annual resolution per board policy and also auditor of state and Ohio Department of Education mandates that, that either treasurer provide this report to the board annually by August 31st. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual report of commercial paper holdings be accepted pursuant to board policy 6144 investments. Per the policy, the treasurer shall prepare annually and submit to the board the superintendent of public instruction and the auditor of state on, on or before August 30, August 31st, a report listing each investment made pursuant to commercial paper notes and banker acceptances during the preceding fiscal year, income earned from such investments, fees, commissions paid in connection with the investments, and any other information required by the board superintendent and the auditor of state. The exhibit contains the commercial paper holdings for fiscal year 2324. The district did not invest in any banker's acceptances during fiscal year 2324. This report is put together by meter investments who handle these types of investments for the district.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Haley, seconded by Sharon. Does anyone have any other questions for George? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
It was motion by Ms. Stachak, seconded by Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Stochek?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is a resolution approving a first amendment to the school district plan pertaining to Emerald Wood subdivision. I'll read the recommendation action, and then after the motion, I'll provide further context.
Great.
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a resolution to approve the first amendment to the school district plan specify the understanding and agreement by, in between the Columbia Local School District Board of Education and the Strongsville City School District Board of Education, Polte Homes, Ohio, LLC, and EWGD Development Group regarding certain issues pertaining to the residential lots and single-family dwellings in the Emerald Wood subdivision, Columbia Township, that are located in both Columbia Local School District and Strongsville City School Districts per the exhibit be approved. This agreement is a first amendment of the original agreement approved on June 30th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachak, second by Mrs. Kilbane?
So if you recall what this agreement is, that Emerald Wood subdivision, I'll back it up a little bit. There is some portion, so the school boundary lines don't match the city boundary lines. We do have a small portion of our school district in, in Colum, in Columbia Station. And part of that is fell into the Emerald Woods development, which was the golf course, which was sold and development was put on there. We had a previous agreement. There are 10 homes that were built right in the center of the boundary line. So at the time of this agreement, both schools in the county came together to give the families an option with school district they would attend. They would pay their property taxes proportionate based on the value, or not, on the amount that the, the land of their property fell in each school district. Since that time, the same agreements in place. However, there was an empty corner lot that wasn't plotted. So that has now been plotted as a home, which falls right on that same boundary line. And then also, the plot numbers, at the time, there were future plot numbers on the map. Those have changed to actual plot numbers, and those are different than the future numbers. The actual size of the plots or the dimensions didn't change, it's just the number. So it's updating the agreement for that one additional, it's really two additional homes, but one of them's completely in Columbia. And then the other one falls right on that center of that boundary line, on a corner line. So.
Any other questions?
Changes.
Okay. Hearing none. You take the roll.
Ms. Stochek?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the last item is the OSBA Capital Conference delegate alternate appointments. November, the capital conference is November 10th through the 12th, 2024. The action be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a delegate and alternate be appointed to attend the OSBA Capital Conference Business Meeting on November 11th, 2024.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Haley, Ms. Stachak, second by Mrs. Kilbane.
And at, at the last meeting, we had a discussion topic on it. And Laura, you were not, but you were nominated to be our delegate. And Sharon, Ms. Kilbane, Sharon, you were all nominated to be our alternate. And what this is, at the capital conference, every year, there is a business meeting, and each school district has a vote to any policy changes for the Ohio School Boards Association. And we have to vote to send one delegate to represent the district.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the confidence in the nomination. No, I got to do it two years ago, and I know Sharon did it last year, and I'm excited to go back again. So thank you. Go ahead, take the roll.
Ms. Stachak?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for George? All right, hearing none. Thanks, George.
Thank you, Ms. Hausel. Nothing specific under my item for tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to our departments, and we'll start with our business manager, Mr. Brechner, for his report.
A couple items in this section for your consideration tonight. The first one is the Ohio Schools Council School Bus Cooperative Bidding and Purchasing Program for the 2425 fiscal year. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education approves participation in the Ohio Schools Council School Bus Cooperative Bidding and Purchasing Program and authorizes the Ohio Schools Council to advertise and accept bids on said board's behalf as per specifications submitted for the cooperative's purchase of two 72-passenger conventional school bus chassis and bodies.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Steve.
So, go ahead.
No, I just, do we have all the buses that we've already said that we were going to?
Um, we're, we're still waiting for two.
Okay.
But we got all the ones from the grant. So George is much happier this evening than he has been when we talked about buses.
And that grant was from three years ago. Those buses finally came.
So George is still melancholy, but he's a little better than he was before we got him. So yeah, we are still waiting for the ones from last year to come in this school year. It's just, just an ongoing, we always, and, and I know people ask me, why do we have buses that are sitting in the lot? Whenever we, you know, are we not using all of our buses? The answer is yes. But we have to have buses in reserve in case buses are in for preventive maintenance, PMs, or if they've broken down. So we always keep, try to keep that ratio where we have a certain percentage of our fleet available, you know, when those times happen. Plus, we may have field trips that go out during regular times, and we need buses for those field trips. So for all those reasons, we're constantly trying to keep a flow of buses and new buses coming in as we retire buses, which is to say, sell them for parts whenever they've outlived their usefulness. So with our new head mechanic, Michael Lockhart, we, we discussed, and two is the number that we wish to go for, for this fall bid, because we are having so many of them starting to get closer to the, the end of life. So this will allow us to, to keep functioning. Before I took this position, I know we had some few, a few lean years where cuts had to be made, and buses were not able to be purchased because of those cuts. And all that did in future years was purchasing five buses at a clip instead of a steady stream of one or two buses every year. So this is continuing that while we have the financial ability to keep that going so that there's no disruption in transportation services.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachak?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second item is the copier and printer maintenance agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager be authorized to renew the agreement with Dex Imaging LLC for the service and supply program for the district's copiers and printers. This agreement is to be effective for one year from September 2nd, 2024, to August 31st, 2025. The cost will be based on the monthly meter program. The next item is bus routes and stops. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that all bus routes and bus stops presented by the Transportation Department for the 2024, 2025 school year be approved, and that the operations manager and supervisor of transportation be authorized to adjust the routes and stops as necessary during the school year. The fourth item is the security service agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the security service agreement with Allied Universal for services at Strongsville High School. And finally, we did have a gift to the district. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following gift be approved. St. Bartholomew Church donated six Wenger State Right Acoustical Shells with an approximate value of $12,000 to the Strongsville High School Music Department. The district paid the discounted rate of $6 for those items.
Thank you. And I just, if you could let, you know, your people know how grateful we are for a smooth start to the school year. I said it's probably one of the quietest ones that I ones that I've lived through.
So sweet, you said that out loud.
No, we appreciate it, it doesn't go unnoticed. Right, I don't want to jinx anything, but we got one more day in this first week, but no, we do appreciate.
I know they've been working very hard, so I will relay that, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director of Elementary Education, Erin Green, to come up with the curriculum report.
Hi, good evening, I have three items tonight for your consideration. First item is for a speech-language pathologist clinical externship. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following student be placed for the purpose of a speech-language pathologist clinical externship at Strongsville Middle School from January thirteenth through April eighteenth, and it is a student from Ohio University. Item number two is an out-of-state trip for our high school marching band and orchestras. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Marching Band and Orchestras to travel to Orlando, Florida to perform at selected venues at Walt Disney theme parks from March twenty-seventh through April first, two thousand twenty-five. Transportation will be via chartered motor coach, lodging and meals paid by participating students, and through fundraising activities. And the last item is a revision in a student-teacher placement. It's a revision to the agenda item from April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, which was a student-teacher placement. The only change is the host school is changing from Whitney Elementary to Chapman Elementary, the host teacher remains the same.
Any questions for Erin? Thanks, Erin. Well, I'm going to fill in for Annie, like a lot of parents at this time, he is moving his oldest daughter into college, so good luck to him. I'm sure it was an emotional day tomorrow for everybody.
He's still there getting everything together, he started this morning.
Yes. So a couple items, I'm sure he'd rather be here at this time after moving a daughter in, but, so a couple items under his agenda, be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education replaces in the agreement with PSI affiliates for nursing services approved on the June twenty-seventh agenda with this one, the twenty-two, twenty-five school year in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for twenty-five, twenty-six in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-four, and for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year in the amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. There were some staffing issues with PSI that they were unable to fill some of the positions, so we have another nursing service that we use, so the contract is a reduction of what it previously, or was approved at. The next three items are funding that is called pass-through funding or six B funds that are utilized for services at our parochial school partners. So the first one is be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into agreement with PSI and affiliates and associates for the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents for intervention specialist services to students at Saint Joseph and John for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The next item, item three, is for the, with the same company, for fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen, fifty cents for intervention specialist services, again, for Saint Joseph and John for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as well as number four, which is for nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty cents for a speech-language pathologist to service students at Saint Joseph and John for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Under item five, be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Applewood Centers, operating an educational institution known as the Gerson School, for placement of students with disabilities for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Finally, number six, be resolved upon my recommendation that tuition-free admission for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year be granted to the two students for, as foreign-exchange students for the upcoming school year. Any questions under student services? All right. With that, I'll turn over to our Assistant Superintendent, Jenny Poco, for the human resource report.
Thank you. Under human resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under number one, we have the resignation of a certificated staff member. Under two, resignations for non-certificated staff. Three, resignation for non-certificated athletic supplemental contract. Under four, we have the retirement of a non-certificated staff. Under five, we have an appointment for our Assistant Treasurer, who you met earlier this evening. Six, appointments for certificated staff. Under seven, appointments for non-certificated staff. Eight, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts. Under nine, appointments for certificated district substitutes. Ten, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Eleven, appointments for home instruction tutors. Under twelve, appointment for our KRA assessment consultant. Under thirteen, changes in status for non-certificated staff. Under fourteen, we have our educational and experience upgrades. Under fifteen, leave of absence for certificated staff. Sixteen, unpaid leaves of absence for certificated staff. And seventeen are our volunteer chaperones. And finally, under eighteen, we have our volunteer coaches, and that concludes my report.
And I'd like to thank Jenny for nine years and one month of doing the human resource report. It will officially transition over to our new HR coordinator next month, so congratulations on reading those long lists for all that time.
Yes. That was a pretty short run, Ryan, so.
So we do not have any items under technology, so with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. Next up, we will go to a report on Polaris Career Center. Michelle and I did have a meeting last week, but before the meeting, we were able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new LPN program at Polaris, and I know this is an adult program, but it's important to touch on it because I was blown away by what Polaris has done. They've accepted forty-five students into their LPN program. The lab that they have with the hospital beds, all of the equipment, the dummies, these students are set up for success. And what is also great about it is it's partnered with Southwest, so when they are done and they pass their LPN test, they are walking into a job right down the street at Southwest. So I just think it's important to touch on that. They started school this week, and I have to say, it's been smooth because we haven't heard anything, so knock on wood, it's a great start at Polaris. And last but not least, I just want to announce, sorry here, our Superintendent Bob Timmons has announced that he will be retiring at the end of the year. Bob has spent the last twenty-plus years at Polaris, serving in numerous administrative roles, including associate principal, principal, program director, assistant superintendent, and his current position as superintendent. He has been serving as superintendent since two thousand and seven. Bob's going to have some big shoes to fill, but as a board, we are confident we can find somebody to take over and continue to grow and see the vision that Bob had, so that will be what we're working on the second half of the year. And that concludes the report, unless Michelle wants to add anything. All right. Back to my agenda here. Report on legislation, there is nothing to report, we will have a report next month. City Council, nothing to report, they have been on sabbatical this month, they will continue on with their meetings in September. Strongsville Education Foundation, Sharon?
We had a meeting last week, and I think the only thing I want to keep reiterating until November is their casino night is November twenty-third. Please look up their page, Strongsville Education Foundation, they have their own page, and you can go to it, you can get tickets, you can be a sponsor, they're working really hard on this, and these guys, I'm always blown away by, you know, they volunteer their time, and they really do give a lot back to the schools. Any field trips that your kids go on, these guys are the ones who are footing the bill, so I can't say enough about them. So anybody out here, just remember, November twenty-third, I told them I would keep punching away, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Strongsville PTA Council?
Well, that's me, yeah. They haven't started yet, their first meeting will be September fifth, I think, don't hold me to that, I have it written down. Is it the fifth? Thank you.
Still the first Thursday of every month?
Yes, yes, so that hasn't changed, so I'm sure we'll get back to what they're up to after our first meeting.
All right, thanks, Sharon. Board Committee Reports, Finance Committee.
We have a finance committee meeting scheduled for September tenth at six-thirty, right here, so if you'd like to join us, have questions about finances, want more in-depth explanation, it's a great small group setting to come and get involved.
Plan on going over the month-end report that just presented for the fiscal year, and then also how the reevaluations impact House Bill nine-twenty and what that means for us.
All right, thank you. Policy Committee. Next meeting to be announced. Great. Facilities Committee. I know Rich was out of town, and I was at the Polaris meeting, Cameron, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you were at the meeting, correct, that happened last week?
I was, I was.
Did you like to record anything?
No, it was a good discussion, obviously, you know, the big part of the discussion is the aging of our buildings. Steve and George have worked together over the past year to look at the capital improvements that are needed to be made, whether it be windows, doors, roofs, HVAC. Obviously, as was mentioned earlier tonight, we had developed an elementary facilities plan to address that, the board has the O-seven-O fund for, with twenty-five million dollars, and so we're having those difficult decisions now about that twenty-five million, and if we're not able to look at bringing new buildings into the district, how we have to use that to put necessary and critical repairs on buildings that are fifty, sixty, seventy years old. So that was the heart of the discussion, going through some of those items and refreshing what was there, as well as highlighting all of the work that was done over the summertime by our maintenance crew and different projects across the district, so the committee was highlighted on that, and I think their next meeting is, it's probably on there, right?
Yeah, November nineteenth at six-thirty.
November nineteenth, all right, thank you. Business Advisory Council Committee.
Our next meeting is September twentieth at seven-thirty AM here.
Okay, thank you, guys, for all your reports. Next on the agenda is the Adoption of Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denotes as type dash action consent, which items constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon separately. Do we have anything that needs to be removed and voted upon separately? All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Take the roll.
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Ms. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Back over to Dr. Raiba for timely information.
Thank you again, as you said, it's been a great start to the school year, and, you know, Jenny and I had the opportunity to visit all of the buildings this week, and I've been in a couple of them a couple times, and it's, from what the office staff is telling us, to the teachers, to the administrators, custodians, it's been, not just in a few buildings, but across the board, a great start, and as you said, it's a part of everybody's work to do that, right? From all the people that worked throughout the summer, to the teachers and administrators and support staff in the building, so thank you to them, and so we wanted to highlight a couple areas that were just nice kickoffs to the school year. So at the middle school, Mr. Saspansky, our eighth-grade principal, he's taken on our Mustang mentors, and one of the things that they do at the start as eighth graders, is they help to transition in our sixth graders as they do their sixth-grade orientation. So whether it was the human welcome tunnel, or team-building, games, Q and A sessions, you know, especially for sixth graders, the nerve-wracking nature of getting ready for locks, you know, that was all a part of it to make our kids feel welcome and comfortable and work through that transition, so thanks to Brian, the entire middle school team, and our Mustang mentors for helping our sixth graders have a smooth transition to the middle school. At the high school, George, we'll go to the next slide, you know, they have, freshman orientation was the first day, and they do a lot of great activities, again, for transitioning, but it's kind of been, in the last couple of years, I'd say two to three years, they've done a pep rally out in the stadium for the kids, so they had Tuesday, they had a first day of school pep rally, working on their strong behaviors, which are safe, trustworthy, respectful, own it, never settle, and get engaged. So they worked through those with the students throughout the year, but a great way to kick off the year on a positive note for our high school students, as those of you that have had high school students, mine are juniors right now, the excitement to go to school and get up that early in the morning, a little pep rally was a good thing on the first day. And then finally, in the last slide, just a reminder, as we are back to school, that means we've got a lot of great events inside of the school and outside, and it's time to kick off, we've had competition already, but to kick off the fall season, so the first Friday Night Lights football game of the year is home, it's this Friday at seven PM at Pacatan Stadium, and then, as you could see, on Saturday, we've got volleyball at the high school, and on Tuesday, we've got boys soccer that will be home, early start, a three PM start on that one. So for all the events, visit our website, you go down, there's a button right in the center that says athletics, you could take a look at all the schedules, and a special shout-out to our athletic boosters who once again approved that they will be covering the cost of all student attendance for athletic events, except for varsity football and varsity boys' basketball. Any other sporting event for our students is free of charge, so we invite them all to come in, be a part of the excitement, and to cheer on their fellow classmates. And just a reminder, in a couple weeks, Friday, September seventh, before the football, next football home game, from five to six-thirty, there is our community tailgate party, so it's always a great time for families of all ages and staff to get out there, whether it's food, snacks, games, just the excitement of it, so we look forward to seeing a packed house before at the tailgate, and also at the game to cheer on the team, our Mustangs versus Berea. So with that, that wraps up some of the updates and timely information for this time.
Great, thank you. Next, we, Board Bylaws and Policies, we do have several policies on a second reading, if you have any questions about those, please reach out to Michelle or Haley as they are on the policy committee. Next, we have Board of Education Other, miscellaneous, does anyone have any other others? Hearing none. Meeting Notifications. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM in the meeting room of the administration building here at one-eight, one-nine-nine Cook Avenue. Next, after that, we have a regular Board of Education meeting to be held on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, seven PM, right here in this room, one-eight, one-nine-nine Cook Avenue. Last, we do have need for executive session to...
Consider the discipline of a public employee and to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Ms. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will enter into executive session at approximately eight-fifty-five, we see no reason to come back out and conduct any regular business, so I'd like to wish everybody a good night, and a great first week for our Mustangs, thanks for being here.